Thank you for joining us this evening, a regular scheduled council meeting of the Park City City Council on April 10th, 2018 at 7:00 PM. Daniella, would you call the roll?
John Linder. George Glover.
Here.
Ben Salceda. Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
Quorum is present, Your Honor.
Okay. Tonight Pastor Bill Coons is going to lead in the invocation and Councilman John Lenher is going to lead in the pledge. If everybody please stand.
Dear heavenly Father, we come before you this evening. Father, I lift the city council for the city of Park City before you. And Father, I ask that you give them guidance. I ask that they seek your guidance in the right thing to do for the city. Father, that it won't be a personal agenda, but it will be what the citizens of Park City need. Bless them. Bless the people of Park City in Jesus' name. Amen.
I plead the以此之子的爱， 一个美国的国家， 一个由人民组成的国家， 一个由神赐予的国家，
Thank you. May be seated. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion? George?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
And Jim?
I second that.
We have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. Tonight, under awards and presentations, I have a proclamation to celebrate Arbor Day. In 1872, J. Sterling Morning proposed to Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce erosion of our precious topsoil by wind, water, cutting, heating, and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide a habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable source, resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas the trees in our city increase property values, enhance economic vitality of the business area, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Ray Mann, Mayor of the city of Park City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 27th, 2018 as Arbor Day. Jim?
I just wanted to note, the citizens of Bear Hill actually got together on Sunday in the drizzle and planted 20 trees they bought from the Arbor Day Foundation. So it was a unique timing of the award, and I wanted to note their efforts. I thought that was pretty nice that they did that.
John?
I'll make a motion when you approve this.
And Tom?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tonight, we don't have anybody signed up for public forum, so we'll move on to our staff reports. And we'll start with our human resource manager, Dana Walden. Dana?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just have a couple of things that I would like to give an update on this evening. The first is on the coupons for people to take trash to the transfer station. As you recall, 190 coupons were approved for distribution. To date, we have distributed 69. So there are still 121 that are left on a first come, first served basis. It's supposed to be spring, and today it is warm, so we're hoping that it will be an opportunity for people to get out and to clean their property and get rid of some things. And then once again, we do have our brush and limb day that is coming up, the third Saturday of this month, so please take advantage of those, excuse me, those opportunities. The second thing that I would like to give you an update on is staffing for the city. As you are aware, that you approved for us to be able to bring on two additional part-time positions. And once again, we are very appreciative of that. I do want to let you know that the part-time janitor position, which was the last council meeting, has been posted, and we're in the process for interviewing for that position. The part-time office assistant receptionist is filled. The individual started yesterday, actually, and we're very happy that we were able to hire a Park City resident for that position. We always choose to do that if possible, so that has worked out well. In addition, we have the following positions that have been filled. We have seasonal positions each year. We have one for park, one for street. Both of those positions are filled, and they will start on April 23rd. The code enforcement officer position has been filled. That individual will start on Monday, April 12th. A police officer position has been filled and started on the 30th, and then will be going to KLETIC on April 30th. Current positions that are open include the utility supervisor position, two open police positions at this time, and the court clerk. As always, we do post our positions on our website, and we accept applications, and they're posted on HR Partners. If you go to the website, there's a link that will link automatically over to those positions. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Dana?
Not seeing any. I think the one thing I do want to point out is just the seasonal help being rehired. It's kind of encouraging that we have people that worked in the seasonal positions, and they're raising their hands and saying, hey, I want to come back. Can I come back? And I think that speaks volumes to our full-time people when part-time seasonal help wants to come back and work with that. So.
And we do have a history of that, so appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from our senior center director, Madison Schreiner. Madison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council members. Just another brief update on the senior center this year. As at the end of last month, the senior center has seen 470 active members, and we are on track to meet the county's requirements for programming at the senior center. And a brief explanation of some of the past events we've had this past month. We've had a beginner's painting class and a medication management workshop that was hosted by KU School of Pharmacy, which was a really cool deal. And also, we got our welcome team at the senior center up and running as well. And just an abbreviated version of our upcoming events, because we have a lot going on. At the end of this month, we have an AARP Safe Drivers Course. We like to host at least one of those a year, but this year, we've had a lot of interest in it. So due to the limited space in the senior center, we've actually had to go ahead and plan another one, because I've had so many people call and want to participate. We are also going to go to Hutchinson with our senior center van to see a presentation from Captain Scott Kelly, the astronaut. Looking ahead into May, we have a fun road trip planned to Barber and Comanche Counties. And thanks to Mr. Melvin Kerr, we're going to be out there almost an entire day, and he's going to help me drive the senior center van, which I truly, truly appreciate, because that's going to be a very long day. We also have our annual Mother's Day afternoon tea planned for May 17th, a dining with diabetes class in June, and our Father's Day bluegrass and barbecue celebration, June 14th. For our transportation program, last month, I submitted 23 rides that were given. And as a reminder, as always, the senior center is open to anyone 55 or over who's a resident of Sedwick County. And also a reminder, if anyone's getting close to 65 years old and planning on enrolling in Medicare, I am available to help people with their Medicare options. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Does anybody have any questions? Not seeing any. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion? George?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
And Jim?
I second that.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. That brings us to new business, item A, which is a public hearing regarding the issuance of taxable industrial revenue bonds for the Apex Trucking project. I'll open this public hearing at 7:11 PM. And Sarah, if you want to come up first? And then we'll, we do have a couple of people signed up to speak.
Thank you, Mayor Mann and honorable council members. Sarah Steel with Gilmore &amp; Bell. We serve as bond counsel to the city, and we are here this evening to conduct the preliminary proceedings for the potential issuance of industrial revenue bonds for an expansion, actually a new facility to be constructed by Apex Trucking and its various related businesses. And the public hearing, as you know, is a requirement under state law that it be held, and after the public hearing is closed, then we'll ask for consideration of a resolution of intent for 1.5 million. We do have representatives here from the company tonight, Travis Littlejohn and Travis Kelly. I feel out of place, because my name's not Travis. And they would like to just briefly describe the project to you and answer any questions on the project, if that's appropriate.
Yes.
I'm Travis Littlejohn, and basically, we're just wanting to build like a 30,000 square foot building for trucking and excavating. And essentially, we're going to, we're kind of growing out of our current facility. So any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay.
I had a couple of handouts. I'm Travis Kelly, and thank you all for letting us come up here and speak before you in this regard. Had a real quick handout, if that's okay. Can you?
Excited. Kind of gives you an idea, and you probably have it in front of you anyway, but where the property is located on 61st Street, just at the north end of Prospect. That is kind of the property layout. But it's currently, it's open and filled. There is some development that's going on around that piece of property to the north at this point in time. We're currently located south of this property on Prospect, it's 6031 North Prospect. So this, that property now is five acres. Kind of to give you a little bit of an idea of the growth, and I come on with Apex in 2014, well, into 2013. At that time, Apex Trucking was running about 29 employees out of there. The excavating side was running five. When we came in, that made it another eight at the end of 2013. So that was 13 employees plus two office people. That was part of the excavating. 29 in the trucking, and there was probably three office personnel that was part of that in 2014. To date, in 2018, Trucking is employing 45 drivers. They have four office staff. We're six drivers short right now, as far as having enough drivers to do the trucks, and business is picking up. So we do need to get those six drivers hired at this point in time. Kind of just giving you an idea about what the growth has been within the trucking. In the excavating side, right now, we have 32 employees, and we have four office staff. So that's went from, I wanted to tell you there earlier, it was like 15 to 32 plus four. And that's been in four years, that growth. You know? To be optimistic about it, I don't think we're going to see that in the next four years, but there's still growth to be had. A lot of growth that's still be out there. And so we're looking at the 10-year. And basically, on the information you had, is pretty much the trucking side of all of that. So there's a lot more added to it as far as the growth in there. I did put on the backside of that page, just kind of a general layout of how the property would be utilized, where the office is, kind of where the equipment. Again, back where we're at right now is five acres, and we're going to a site that's 18 acres, 17 points something. There is the roadway that, or the easement that's going through there, kind of cuts that property, as you see on this. And I've already talked to Jack. I think to the north, it's been vacated, so we would like to vacate that, and that kind of opens the whole property up for us. So I don't have a whole lot else to talk about. Really, we just have some conceptual on the building, but again, it's a 300 by 100 building. Will be utilized as office and shop. I don't remember how many square feet was the office. It would be about 2,500, I believe. Okay. At our current location right now, offices that really ought to occupy one person is occupying two people. Occupancy in offices should have two people. We've got four people in it. We love each other there. I mean, but it is real cozy, and with this expansion, it'd probably kind of give us a little more room to breathe. We do appreciate, again, the opportunity to be able to come up here and present this, and thank you again for your consideration in the tax payment, so.
Okay. George, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a quick question. I really appreciate the fact that you're expanding. If someone wanted to apply for one of your trucking positions, do they go directly to your website, or how do they go about doing that?
Pretty much, it's a walk-in.
Walk-in?
Yeah. Walk-in, fill out an app, they get screened, they're taken out, given test drive in the truck, whatever they say they can drive. We have multiple trucks. Right now, that runs out of that yard is 52.
Fifty, or probably 60, counting that as a 55 for trucking.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Tom?
I was going to say, this is a homegrown trucking outfit that, not too far south of 53rd Street is where he started. Done quite well in the last 15 years.
Right.
And I'm glad to see you stay in the area.
Yeah, we want to stay here if possible. For sure.
Melvin?
Well, I'll welcome you to it. I'm glad you're going to do this. I have a couple of concerns about the added traffic on 61st there and the fuel island there. I know our water source guy gets a little touchy about the contamination in the water there, so.
I see.
I don't know. Are they all going to be contained, I guess, up to?
Yeah. Code and everything, and the...
And you're going to help us out on repaving the road or something?
There you go. Well, you know, we already use it, so, I mean, we're already going up and down through there right now.
Right.
And so it's just going to, you know, make it easier to get out on 61st Street, I would think, because you can see the traffic a little better coming off the property once it's up to grade and everything, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. George?
I just have a question. Is your business address Wichita or Park City?
Park City.
Park City. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you both. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll ask if anybody else wishes to speak on this item, this public hearing? Not seeing anyone, I will close this public hearing at 7:20 PM. And we'll call the next item, item B, which is Consider a Resolution of the Governing Body of the City of Park City, Kansas, Determining the Advisability of Issuing Taxable Industrial Revenue Bonds for the Purpose of Financing the Acquisition, Construction, and Equipment of a Commercial Facility to be Located in Said City and Authorizing the Execution of the Related Documents. Sarah?
I will just add that this resolution of intent is your first step on this process. We will return at the time of issuance of the bonds with an ordinance for the council to consider as well. The resolution expresses the intent of the city to provide a property tax exemption up to 10 years on everything purchased with bond proceeds, subject to a payment in lieu of taxes at least equal to the amount of taxes currently being collected on this 19 acres. And other than that, it authorizes up to $1.5 million project, and Mr. Littlejohn has informed me that he intends to spend that much. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions at this point? Not seeing any. Is there a motion from the council? Tom?
I'd make a motion, we approve the resolution.
And John?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any discussion. Daniella, would you call the roll?
John Linder.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that resolution passes 7-0?
That is Resolution 988-2018.
I just want to thank you both for coming. A lot of times, we have companies that ask for IRBs, and they never send anybody. So I think it's a huge thing to see that you actually showed up to the meeting for that, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to item C, which is Considering Matching the Convention and Tourism Funds for the Flag and Branding in the Amount of $11,775 to be funded out of the 2018 MTB fund. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Think we discussed this at a previous meeting. The goal here is to have a flag design and to set up a method by which we could brand ourselves to the general public and to the region as a whole. It's part of economic development in giving your best face forward. Mr. Garner is here this evening. He can explain more about it. But anyway, the convention tourism is splitting the cost of this with us, and we have a, we'll go on to the next item. I don't want to jump ahead, but we've had a committee look at different proposals for this, and I'll discuss that when we get to the next item.
What's the next item?
Selecting a consultant to actually do the project. But we can't do that unless we fund this part of it.
I was grouping those two together.
Yeah. I can go on if you want me to.
I think we should. It would just, it would make sense that we come back and we also talk about the committee and the selection process, because we're talking about funding, so.
Okay. The committee consisted of two council members, Ben and Jim, and two members from the tourism board, Karen and Jennifer, and myself. I sent out requests to six firms. We got three requests back. The committee reviewed their proposals and felt that Garner, Garner's firm is the best proposal of the ones that they received. Mr. Garner is here, if you'd like for him to say something.
Might have him on the second part. I just want to cover the committee and the selection process.
Yeah. Everybody reviewed, like I say, everybody reviews their proposals, looking at experience, looking at methodology, which also include public and how you get the public involved, and...
Jim, since you're the only one here from the committee, do you want to jump in there?
No, I think Jack's providing a pretty good summary. We did have a really good presentation from three of the companies, you know, vying for the work. It was pretty impressive. As Jack said, this is more than a flag. This is branding for the city. This is marketing. This is economic development. The deeper you get into it, the more appealing it is. The winning, the person or the company we're recommending here, you know, was going to involve the community to, through a structured method. It's just, there's a lot of, and we'll get into more of that, I'm sure, here in a minute, but it was very well thought through. It was very unanimous on who we liked the best. So.
But part of that selection process, everybody kind of received the proposals. You guys had a scoring system involved.
That's correct.
And you scored that out, and then you guys actually physically came together and met and had some discussion.
Yep. That's absolutely, we came together last week ago, last Monday, and met.
Also, I had put in your packet, I hope you received it, was a winning proposal. Was put in your packet, and I hope everybody had a chance, opportunity to read it.
And I would make a comment that, you know, while our packets scan everything in black and white, this was, this was an impressive presentation in color, and some quite notable clients that they've handled.
Okay. All right. George?
Well, I just, Jack, I just had a question. And I apologize, I haven't read the proposal. I know I was big on the citizens of this city being involved. Are they going to involve the citizens of this town?
Yes.
I'd like to know that before we vote on the funding.
Well, Mr. Garner's here, he can explain that a little bit.
Do you want to address that comment?
I picked the wrong seat. Here's your mayor. Mr. Mayor, honorable council members. Yes, and Jim, as you well know, and Jack from reading through the proposal, it's a relatively extensive process, but it's something that we're involved with on a daily basis in dealing with branding, companies, organizations, cities, communities, and the likes. And Mr. Capps, yes, absolutely. Probably one of the most important things to know is that, long before we ever start any designing or development of any marketing strategies or tactics, we spend the largest part of our time doing what we refer to as discovery, which is that time that we can spend with the community, the citizens, all the stakeholders that care to be involved in this. And we do that through multiple meetings. We also anticipate utilizing some survey methodology to reach those that might not be able to participate otherwise. So it, that really is how you start to build that level of consensus amongst the community on the projects that we work on, so.
Okay. Well, I was just hoping that the citizens of this city had a chance to have a say in it, because that represents, it represents them.
Absolutely. Yes. Yeah. No. And especially in this situation. I mean, nothing will represent them more, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Jim? Well, if there's, if there's no more discussion, I would, I would recommend that we match the convention tourism funds for the flag and branding in the amount of $11,775 to be funded out of the 2018 MTBE fund. John?
I will second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. Tom?
I'm just going to say that based on my comments at the last meeting, I'm going to be voting no.
Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
How many nays do we got? One, two, three? Okay. So that passes 4-3. And that brings us to item, which is Consider the Recommendation of the Flag and Branding Selection Committee of Branding Consultants. Jack? Kind of like we've already covered.
Yeah, I think we covered it pretty good. We, the committee recommends Mr. Garner to be the consultant to lead us in this effort. lead us in this effort.
Okay, Jim, did you want to add to that?
I don't, I don't think there's really anything else to add. That hasn't already been said.
Mr. Gardner, do you have anything you'd like to, to say?
Oh, you know, uh, just that I have a fondness, uh, for Park City. Uh, as you may well know, and I, I know there's a number of you in this room that we've, uh, had the opportunity to work with in the past in the development of your wayfinding system for the community, the development of your identity, uh, for the community, and, uh, I respect the history of this community and the ambition that it has, and, uh, you know, the growth with which it's, you know, kind of proceeded, and we're anxious to be able to try and, uh, represent that, and especially with this opportunity to, uh, involve the community with the branding, so, I'm glad to answer any questions you might have.
George?
I'd like a question, maybe this is for you, but I know we have a very beautiful flag, which is well-received. What, what are we going to do? Is it going to be?
I think it'd be something that we should put in the historical items, that...
Okay, because it is a beautiful flag.
I mean, is that what you're asking? If we're going to save it?
What we're going to do.
Yeah, I, I think most definitely it's part of our history, and it should be saved and recognized as, as that, you know? John?
I assume you were waiting on a motion. I will make a motion, uh, that we approve the committee's recommendation of Gardner design.
Okay, Jim?
I'd second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
And that passes four-three. That brings us to our next item, which is Item E, Consider a Resolution Establishing the Stormwater Management Advisory Board. Doug, do you want this one? I got Jack's name down, but...
Sure.
Okay.
Mayor and council, uh, this is a resolution that essentially, uh, with, with a few minor, kind of grammatical and cleanup changes, um, duplicates a, a resolution that we adopted several years ago. I think the resolution was adopted at that point after a failure of the stormwater utility. And the idea was, uh, that the council wanted to find a way to, uh, identify and prioritize, uh, projects up throughout the city that were important in dealing with stormwater drainage, um, and then talk about how to fund those and the funding of those. That committee, uh, was organized, uh, and met for several years, uh, and then, uh, once we adopted the stormwater utility ordinance, charter ordinance, and established the utility, I think the thought was, we didn't need that, and we did away with it. So, we, that resolution that adopted it, uh, maybe four or five years ago, a couple of years ago repealed it, and so this just brings it back, because there has been, uh, some, some real thought that this would be a good adjunct to our stormwater utility, it would provide some input from the community and from council, uh, to, uh, council members, uh, on the committee, if that was appropriate, uh, to identify projects, problem areas, and make suggestions about funding, uh, funding sources. And so that's what the resolution does. It doesn't really do anything different than what we had several years ago. Uh, I made a few changes, and I'm sorry, I can't tell you exactly what they were, but they were more clean up the language sort of things. So, for, that's for your consideration tonight, if you, if you wish to, again, authorize that, uh, Stormwater Management Advisory Board, uh, you would adopt the resolution. Uh, this will be a board that would be, uh, subject to open meetings, it would have bylaws, um, and then, uh, the appointment is set out in there the way the, the membership is appointed.
Okay, Tom?
I agree with this approach, I'm going to make a motion, we approve a resolution establishing Stormwater Advisory Committee, or Board.
Melvin?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Not seeing any, Daniella, would you call the roll?
John Leonard?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Brandy Bailey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
Aye.
And that resolution passes seven-zero?
That is Resolution nine-eight-nine dash two thousand eighteen.
Thank you. That brings us to Item F, which is Considering Engineering Agreement with Bachman Company for the replating of high ridge second for the amount of ninety-seven hundred. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I, uh, contacted three engineering firms, uh, to quote this project. Uh, one ended up not setting a price at all, uh, two did, and they were real extremely Uh, one of the, uh, companies was just giving, uh, given three projects from the city, um, felt like that this company here, since they were involved in the original plating, and had a lot of the original material, uh, could quickly move this forward in a fast fashion. I think we're kind of under the gun a little bit here, because if we're going to start selling lots and stuff, we need to hit that period of time when people are, are getting ready for summer, uh, looking for places to build, uh, so they can get their kids into school in the fall, and stuff. So, it's critical to move this project along very quickly, if we can. Uh, but, uh, both of the firms were highly recommended, um, but Bachman, like I said, had the experience, uh, with this particular plat originally, and has a lot of the data and the drainage calks and stuff already, and is willing to move it along quickly. The other firm, we just gave three projects to, that would probably keep them busy, uh, so, that's a recommendation.
Okay.
My recommendations, but definitely not our recommendations, my recommendations.
We discussed it, I back you on that. Tom?
I, I have heard there may be somebody else interested in that property, are we going to play that out, or are we going to go pay, place this engineering order?
No, because you just asked me about that earlier, and I told you we were going to play that out.
Okay.
And I, I told you, we've asked them to put something in writing?
I understand that, but that's not what I hear the city manager saying, or city administrator saying, so, okay. Provided we don't jump in and place an order tomorrow for this engineering, I would make a motion to approve and not to exceed for ninety-seven hundred dollars. And the reason I'm doing it not to exceed is I see that the plating service is arranged from six thousand to nine thousand dollars, so it may be less than that.
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
We also took that into consideration in selection also.
And that's what we're hoping for, since they had done the other plat.
I got some more comments, but I need a second on it first.
Jim, do you want a second?
I'll second it then for discussion, but I have nothing to add.
Okay, go ahead, Tom.
I do know that, that there's some other interest, Jack, and that person, uh, based on some other areas of town is the real deal, and we need to play that before we replat it, and I just wanted to get that out, so.
And he's been, he's been asked to provide us something in writing?
I understand that.
So that we can come back to the council?
I, I had an opportunity to work in one of his areas, and, uh, they, they couldn't even get the streets in quick enough, and he was putting basements in, so he's that positive, so, okay.
I met with him today, and it was like, well, we could do this, we could do that, we could do this.
I understand.
It's all scattered, and I said, well, you need to put it in writing, so we have a chance to review it.
And I talked to Ray, and I'm kind of catching this off here, I would like to play that out a little bit before we go spend money to re-engineer it, if we can sell it as is, so.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further, did Jim have comments? Jim, did you have a comment?
No, I, I seconded the discussion, but I had no comments, so.
Okay. Not seeing any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven-zero. That brings us to Governing Body Reports. I just want to start with, uh, Kansas League training, we talked about that at the last meeting. Um, so far as of today, nobody's gotten with Daniella, if they're interested in going, so I just want to remind you, if you're interested in going, she needs to know no, no later than April eleventh. Um, and then, once again, that conference is on April twentieth and twenty-first, so just reminder for council on that. And that's all I have, Jim?
Uh, enjoy the spring weather on the days we get it, and go plant some trees.
Okay, Brandy?
Um, I'm just, I'm excited that we're moving forward with this flag. I just want to encourage the citizens to get out and come to these meetings, um, this flag's for you guys, and, and we need your input, so that way it represents you, the way that you feel that, um, you should be represented. Um, also, um, I just want everybody to keep, um, Ben, Sossetta, and your thoughts and prayers, um, he's having some issues with family, so if you'll just keep them in the, in your thoughts, appreciate that.
Okay.
George?
Well, in the flag deal, I'm, uh, I was originally sort of opposed to, to this. I was relieved to hear that they're going to involve the citizens in it. I, I think that's what's right in my vote, because I'm, I'm firmly, firmly believe, I, I had people tell me sometimes that, that, uh, they don't feel like the city cares what they think, and I think it's great that, that they're going to be invited to be involved in this. And we have a lot of talent out here in the city. There's, there's, uh, you know, as far as branding, you know, I, I'm, I'm not sure what, what we're looking for there, uh, before branding the city, I, I'm kind of in the dark there, but, uh, anyway, that's all I got.
Tom?
I just had two things, uh, one of them is that Saturday, the SCAC meeting's going to be here at eight-thirty, uh, speaker's going to be Mary Jones, CEO of, uh, Mental Health Association, so should be a good speaker. Um, the other thing is, pardon? I talked to Jack earlier this week about a project that we had at WAMPO that's not in the funding list, and it's the West Sixty-first Street corridor through there. Uh, if we put a proposal together and submit it to WAMPO, we can get it on the next TAC meeting, which would be the end of the third week of the month, or fourth week of the month, Monday, uh, we can get that in there. Uh, soonest it would be up, it would be like twenty-twenty-one, if we wait after that, it'll be twenty-two, it'll be in the next forty-year plan, so, we need to do that. And there was also some activity today pushed to, uh, force everything to have an ROI before you can get it in, a proposal in, uh, which will happen in twenty-twenty-two, so, be a lot more work if we don't get that moving, so. And I'm looking at the intersection of Sixty-first and, and Broadway today, and it's pretty sad, too, so the whole area is, like, QuickTrip's going to need some work, and if we can get somebody to help us pay for it, we need to do that. It'd be an eighty-twenty match right now, so.
So, I think Tom's asking, we get that on the next agenda?
Well, I think it was, uh, I think the council's number-one gold.
Right.
To do the project, um, I'd already submitted it once, all I have to do is just resubmit what I have.
All right, just, just asking if we need to get council backing again to resubmit it, yeah, I think...
If the council wants to, that's fine.
We're fine, I mean, the way it is now, we can go ahead and submit, so.
Okay, you made it sound like it needed to be more formal in the council.
No, he needs to resubmit and get it back into the money side, so that we get it in the next tip, so it gets approved.
Okay.
The only thing we may have to look at is the money. If we're going out that far, it might be more expensive, you know, uh, so, I can do it.
Okay.
And I'd like to see him look at the drainage side of it, too, and be part of the project, not do like we did on Fifty-third Street, so.
Now, uh, spring is here, a lot of activities going on, uh, anybody wants to volunteer for anything, I mean, there's, there's Fourth of July Committee, there's, uh, Park and Rec, there's The Pride, there's everybody, so if anybody would like to be on any committee or help out any way, that'd be appreciated, and, uh, keeping Ben in his prayers there.
George?
I wanted to reiterate the fact with Ben, and keep me, your prayers and thoughts and prayers. Um, we're still working on the Park City Fishing Derby, this will be our tenth annual. I remember when it started in two thousand eight, I think we had about seventy people, now it's well over two hundred people that come out, so it's a family event, it's free, it's at the Chisholm Point Pond on North Grove, so get your fishing rods out, get the line on them, and get your baits ready, because this is going to be exciting, so, thank you.
I have nothing, I will make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay, motion by John, second by Tom, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that motion passes seven-zero.